Thank you very much. Now, we will begin with opening statements, introductions, introductions rather, starting with James Newberry. One and a half minutes.
Welcome. Welcome to everyone. Thanks for being here tonight. This should be fun. My name's James Newberry. I've been a Grand County Commissioner for 16 years. I've learned a lot on how to do the job over those 16 years. I have been, I moved to Grand County in 1979. From that time on, I've been involved in the community. I've served 12 years on the REC District Board down in the Fraser Valley. We built the Fraser Valley Sports Complex by refinancing bonds and finding new ways to come up with money and without raising taxes. And we were able to build that facility and add new nine holes to the golf course, Pole Creek Golf Course, without increasing taxes or going to a bond. So, I took that same concept into county government. There was no plan when I got there. There was no five-year capital. We've instituted that. We've instituted a lot of how we're going to spend our money, and we have become debt-free. And we're one of only two counties. I'm extremely proud of that. I'm extremely proud of our employees that we have at Grand County. And I'm sure we're going to talk about some issues on what they should and should not be doing, but that's about it. I don't have any more. I do coach up here at the high school. I enjoy that. Most people like to go fly fishing or boating or something. My hobby and my passion is coaching. I love working with these kids up here at the high school. They always impressed me, and they gave me one of the, I guess, the ultimate respect. Last year, the class of 2012 asked me to speak at their graduation. And that was both humbling and one of the most exciting times I had, and I really enjoyed that. So, that's been one of my highlights of my career, I'd say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we will have an introduction from Chaz McConnell. One and a half minutes.
I think it's working. Thank you, Sky High News and Mr. D for putting this debate together. My son Lucas is in your Western Civ class, and as a parent, I'm grateful that you have put this forum together. I believe it is the civic duty of every voter to become informed with the values and the goals of the candidates who are running for office. My daughter Caitlin, in a few years, will also be in this class, and I hope to continue this tradition of having this debate. I think it is truly a benefit to the community and also to the students. I came to Grand County 33 years ago. I had $58 in my pocket. I had my work ethic, and I had my education. Shortly after arriving here, I met my beautiful wife Ann, who I think is on the way, but she said it's a whiteout between here and Fraser, so be careful going home. I started my business, and I'm raising my family here. I have been able to achieve the American dream right here in Grand County. As a county commissioner, I want to be able to help other people in Grand County realize and achieve that dream. I want these students sitting right here, including my son Lucas, who better be behaving, that if he decides to go to college and come back, that there's going to be a healthy business environment for him to come back to. He's also going to have a thriving natural environment also. As a county commissioner, I want to focus on protecting the water and natural resources and promoting business here in Grand County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, for introductions, we have Mr. Rob Rankin.
Thank you very much for taking the time and effort to be here tonight. Also like to thank Middle Park High School and the Sky High News for this opportunity. I'm Rob Rankin, candidate for District Two, primarily representing Grand B and Grand Lake, but you get to vote on it county-wide. I'm a third-generation Colorado native, came to Grand County in 1981 as principal of Grand B Elementary School. Did that job for nine years, went to Greeley for six as an elementary principal down there, came back here in 1996 as superintendent for the East Grand School District, served in that capacity till 2008, when I decided to hand it off to somebody else so they could have the fun. For the last five years, I've been involved in some small business, large business in terms of sales, and in the consulting business. Got community involvement in terms of I've served on the board of the Grand Foundation, Grand Beginnings, Rotary Club in Grand B. I have extensive experience in government, dealing with multimillion-dollar budgets, large staff, working with other governmental entities, which I think give me a great perspective for the role of county commissioner. My wonderful wife Molly is here. Had two boys that graduated from Middle Park High School, Ben and Nick, who now are gainfully employed after graduating from college. My interests, I'm an outdoorsman, skier, kayaker, biker, and am glad to be able to live in the place where other people come to vacation. Thanks.
All right. And finally, Merritt Linky. One and a half minutes.
I'm Merritt Linky, and I'm a Grand County native. I was born right in Cremling. And if you look on the wall out there, you'll see a picture that looks just like I do now, except there's a little more hair in that picture. The class of 1978, so I am a Middle Park High School graduate. My wife Terry is sitting there in the back, and some of you know my son Jase. He'll be at number 77 at the football game tomorrow night. Hopefully, you'll all be here. Number 77, that's Jase. Some of you may know my daughter McCall. She graduated from here a couple of years ago. And some of you may know my daughter Rachel, who has also graduated here four years ago, who's going to graduate from the University of Wyoming this coming spring. So, that's my three kids, my family. I'm part of a larger family, and some of you know some of the Linkys. Some of us are closely related to some of the other ones, and some of us choose maybe not to be so closely related to some of the other ones, but there is a lot of Linkys around this county. Anyway, I chose to run for county commissioner, really, for the reason because I'm a candidate of the people. People ask me to run. There's a couple of choices you can make if you don't like the way things are going. The first one is the easy one, and that's what a lot of people do sometimes, and I'm sometimes guilty of that, too. And you can sit back and complain or gripe about the way things are going, or you can stand up and take a stand and get involved and try to make a difference. And that's the choice that I took, and that's why I'm here today talking to you guys. So, I do believe that I would be a good representative of our county. I own and operate a Grand County business that I built from the ground up. I do business in every town in the county, a lot of the ranches, a lot of the customers. We distribute and sell products regionally, but the business is based right here in Grand County. So, I get a good feel for what's going on here in the county, what works, what doesn't work, and I think that those are qualities that make me in tune and in touch with the businesses and people of Grand County. Thank you for the Sky High News, Middle Park High School, for putting this on. You guys are doing a great job. Also, Channel 18 is here tonight, so you can watch this on live TV when you get home, I think. Thank you, Merritt Linky.
Thank you. Okay, our first question is going to go to James Newberry. What are your thoughts on zoning regulations in Grand County, and how would you balance competing interests in zoning disputes? You have one and a half minutes to respond. What are your thoughts on zoning regulations in Grand County, and how would you balance competing interests in zoning disputes?
Zoning regulations are a, basically, the concept is for private property rights. A lot of people like to think that, or a lot of people do think, which I believe, that once you buy certain property in a certain zone, you have the right to do whatever you want that is legal in that zone. The other side of it is, if you own a house next door to that, you also have some property rights and what you can expect to happen in that home. We're finding that more and more at the county right now because of all, the trees are gone. It used to be, we couldn't see each other. Our neighbors couldn't see each other, but now we can. And it seems to be an issue what somebody else has in their yard or what kind of business they're running out of their home. There's home-based businesses that can be done, but truly zoning is something that it gives you, it gives the person that's buying the property, gives them some assurance of what they can do, and the people around them of what can be next door to them. It does focus most of the businesses into the metro areas, into the towns, and that's what we've tried to do in our master plan. And zoning is a key element in that. There is some change in zoning. There is some flexibility in it, but it's not an easy process, but it is a public process. And that's why we try to enforce it, is to keep everybody in step, in line with it. But when we get into neighbor disputes, which it seems to be more common these days, it seems to be neighbor on neighbor, and they want to use the zoning regulations or some other type zoning, other regulations. I'd rather see neighbors just get together and work it out, but they bring government into it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Chaz McConnell. What are your thoughts on zoning regulations in Grand County, and how would you balance competing interests in zoning disputes? You have one and a half minutes.
Well, first of all, I want to let everybody know that I'm a big believer in private property rights. Grand County has had a number of issues over the years with zoning and the way that some of their zoning regulations were written. I know they're trying to clean that up, which I think is a great thing. For instance, in a neighborhood I live in, it was a zoned multifamily, and there was a development that was going to go next door, which I didn't agree with. They had to go get a variance because they wanted to go higher than the height restriction of 35 feet. They wanted a variance to put in more units. I thought that was wrong. I went to the county and petitioned my case. It went back and forth. Luckily for me, the developer decided he wasn't going to build there. I was able to buy the lots on both sides of my house and rezone them for single-family. As far as these variances that I'm talking about, there seems to be a lot of variances that the people ask for. And as far as, as far as that goes, in my opinion, if someone's asking for a variance to make something higher density than it should be, then I have a real problem with that. If you buy a piece of property and it's zoned a certain way, then you should be able to do what you want to do on that, whether it's known DC, Destination Commercial, whatever that might be. I've had a lot of people ask me, what do you feel about bringing in a big box store? Well, not that anybody wants to see a big box store like that, but if the person owns that property and they have a right to do X, Y, and Z on that property, and it falls within the restrictions of the zoning, I believe they should be able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. What are your thoughts on zoning regulations in Grand County, and how would you balance competing interests in zoning disputes? You have one and a half minutes.
The building regulations in Grand County does, they do concentrate the major developments around the targeted areas of Grand B, Fraser, Winter Park, basically, as James said, the urban areas within Grand County. I think that development is sound. I think that as the building regulations have been developed over the years, they've been thoughtful and careful. That's not to say that they're perfect, and I think every time that you come up, I am not in favor of multiple variances. There may be those exceptional issues, but in terms of residential, multifamily, business interests, they need to follow the regulations as they exist. The competing interests, observing some of the issues that the commissioners have dealt with over the past couple of months, I've seen a real preponderance, which I support in terms of really coming up with a mediation, a conflict resolution, that I would be actively involved in if necessary. It doesn't work in terms of having people fight, argue, sue each other. Definitely need to work on resolving the conflicts as peacefully as possible. Thanks.
Thank you. What are your thoughts on zoning regulations in Grand County, and how would you balance competing interests in zoning disputes? You have one and a half minutes.
First of all, I think it's important to let you know where I stand on this, and that is that I am a firm believer in protecting the private property rights of our citizens. The bottom line is, is you own a piece of property, you should be able to do with it what you want. Now, that being said, if what you are doing on your property affects your neighbor's property negatively, then that's where we have a problem, and that's where it becomes something that's not so black and white. It becomes pretty gray. And what I'm seeing happening in the county is there, right now, there's a lot of inconsistencies in enforcement of the regulations that are currently on the books. Some guys, some neighbors get enforced, some guys don't. Some people can do this, some people can do that. Some people are in violation, some people aren't. So, there's inconsistencies in the enforcement. What needs to happen is that we need to go through these regulations and either get them cleaned up, or modify them, or change them, because the bottom line is, if we're not going to enforce them, then we shouldn't have them. So, we should enforce the ones we have or get rid of them if we don't. That's my feeling about this, and I would be willing, as a commissioner, when there's gray areas like there is, that we need to listen to both sides and find out what it is where we could have some common ground and come up with a solution that makes it work for everyone. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Question two goes to Merritt Linky first. You have a minute and a half to respond. How do you plan to improve the local economy? Please be specific.
Thank you. That's a great question on everyone's mind, and there is, there's been a ton of different things being talked about here, and how much government role is necessary or is really asked for to improve the economy. I think the government's job really is to facilitate things here. I don't think we need to throw money at things to try to stimulate economy. Those things don't tend to work. I think we need to facilitate things, especially those things that are resource-based businesses. And what I mean by a resource-based business is that things that are made here in Grand County, that we can have a net export of products and a net import of revenue. And things, and particular examples are some of the businesses that have just now, have been around for a while, but some of the ones that I'm talking about is Confluence Energy, for example, has developed a pellet, a wood pellet, that is in huge demand in the oil fields in North Dakota. This particular pellet has a little bit of chemistry involved with it that absorbs oil and not water. It's kind of a unique thing. Another example is the new sawmill business is going in impartial. They're making tubafores out of beetle kill pine. That's a great resource, something that's in demand. When we had the huge building boom here back in the early 2000s, why weren't we using some local resources? We were importing our tubafores from Canada. That didn't seem to make a lot of sense to me. What about the Ranch Creek, what the Joloviches have out there? That's a great local business. They've expanded, they're making lumber, they're making wood shavings. I think we need to look at enhancing and supporting our resource-based businesses in Grand County. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Rankin. How do you plan to improve the local economy? Please be specific.
I'm going to win the lottery. No. Grand County has a history of boom and bust, whether it is from our mining industries, our tourism, the economy, economic situation around the country. We need to come up with a reasonable plan that is going to stabilize and keep us as solid as we can and try and minimize those efforts of boom and bust. Probably, our tourism is our first and foremost. It's our lifeblood, and in terms of preserving and protecting our natural resources here, are most important. County government's role in terms of making sure that our infrastructure is as solid as it can be. The issue in terms of our access to broadband, high-speed internet access is super, and that has to be preeminent. The county's recently hiring an economic development coordinator was a positive step, that we do have someone now that can coordinate the efforts, that can be the point person and the go-to person in terms of inquiries, and I fully support that. The Grand B Enterprise Initiative is going countywide. That work spearheaded through the Town of Grand B, Marisi Cipriani, with the facilitator of Patrick Brower, really builds on the people that live here already and that already have a vested interest in Grand County to develop that economic point from that point forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Chaz McConnell. How do you plan to improve the local economy? Please be specific.
I sit on the Winter Park-Frasier Valley Chamber of Commerce, and I've been on that board for about almost three years. And in those three years, we've lost about 70 businesses. To me, this is heartbreaking. You have 70 families that have come here with a dream, and for whatever reason, they weren't able to make their business work. There's a lot of things that I would try to do. I know that the county hired a business and economic development director, and I applaud him for that. However, I believe that she doesn't really have any true direction. When I went to the commissioners and gave them my strategic economic development plan, this spurred them to want to hire this position. They didn't really give her any true direction, and I really believe what they're doing is they're trying to reinvent the wheel. They have committees, they have people that are getting together from the community and saying, this is what I think we need to do. We're losing time here. We are losing people from Grand County at an alarming rate. They're leaving here because of our business, our business environment isn't good. So, what would I do? Well, one is, infrastructure is with internet. We have to have reliable, high-speed internet and affordable. In Winter Park, there's a number of people that I know that are, have businesses that they could be anywhere, that they could be anywhere in the, anywhere in the world and run their business, these location-neutral businesses. We have to, we have to figure out a way to get businesses to come here, to absorb some of our distressed real estate, and until we can do that, our construction, our construction industry is also going to lag behind. We've got to figure out a way, particularly in my district, which is the Fraser Valley, how are we going to get people to come here? How are we going to get them to spend money here and possibly even buy a home here? Tourism. We have to do more with tourism. We have to do more with business and economic development. We have to help our businesses that are here, and we have to try to entice businesses from elsewhere to come in.
Thank you. Lastly, for question number two, James Newberry, you have a minute and a half to response, respond. How do you plan to improve the local economy? Please be specific.
First of all, I'd like to thank Merritt for pointing out some of those victories that we've had with the pellet plant. We had to work, the county had to step in, work with CDOT just so they could get in and out of that facility that they had. So, we played a part in that. The sawmill, bringing Joloviches in, doing all those things, that is, I want to thank for getting the notice. I also like what we're seeing in the paper now, a little upswing. We've got more building permits than we have in the past. Things are starting to turn back around. I think that a few months, a few years ago, that was a false economy. That was a building boom. There is the ebb and flow that happens with that, and I think it busted, and now we're trying to find out what the new, the new norm is, and we'll start building from that. Yes, we've hired an economic development person. This is a clear choice between Chaz and myself because he wants to do top-down. I want to do, I want to get, go to the businesses in this county, find out what they need. I don't want to come in and tell them what they need. That's not what, that's not what government does. We come in and find out what our role is, and our role is infrastructure. We're working on broadband. We've been one of the leaders in trying to bring the broadband and the internet service to Grand County, and we're trying to get backup service. We do have some now. We're bringing in the private sector, some of the local providers, Eden Recore, some of those are working with us. We work with the private sector. The private sector drives the economy. To think that government's going to do that is just a misconception, and I'm sorry, I just don't agree with that, and I don't agree with the top-down approach. So, there's a clear choice for you.
Thank you very much. Now, onto question number three. We'll start with Chaz McConnell. You have a minute and a half to respond. What are your top three agenda items if elected?
Well, first of all, I need to comment what James said about my top-down, as far as business and economic development goes. I would want to do both the bottom-up, which is what Patrick Brower is trying to do with Grand B Initiative, the Enterprise Initiative, which he's been successful. He's already created jobs. And why can't we do both? Why can't we do top-down, try to bring businesses in, and also try to enhance the businesses that are here? Why wouldn't we try to do both of those at once? As far as my top three things that I would want to do if elected is, number one, the first thing I would do would be put term limits back to effect for the county commissioners and also the sheriff. Being a county commissioner for four terms, 16 years, that's not the way it should be, in my opinion. Secondly, we have got to try to negotiate more on the water issues, particularly the Windy Gap Farming Project, which is coming up here very, very quickly. We have rivers that have been decimated, and I know Commissioner Newberry has worked hard on this over the last 16 years, and I applaud him for that, but we have a lot less water in our rivers now than we did 16 years ago. Denver Water and Northern, they want to take 70% they've taken out of our native flows. They want to take half of the 30% that's left. We, I know these are very, very complicated issues, and there's a lot of moving parts, but if we lose, if we lose our rivers and we don't have either a bypass or flushing flows for the upper Colorado, that river's going to die. And then my third thing would be my business and economic development. My time is up.
Thank you. Now, onto James Newberry. You will have a minute and a half to respond. What are your top three agenda items if elected?
First of all is water. That is the biggest choice that we have. The disagreement that I have with Chaz is, he's saying that they're going to take more water. They've already decided they're going to take the water. They have water rights. That's Colorado State statute. That's water rights. They're going to take the water. They're deciding where they're going to put it. What we've been negotiating for, for the last seven years, is what can we get out of this? What can we do to bring back the Fraser? What can we do to help the Colorado River and to make Grand Lake clearer again? It used to be where you could see nine, 10 meters up in Grand Lake. Now, when they're pumping, you can barely see one meter. So, those are key issues. You can't just say flushing flows and a bypass on Windy Gap Dam. That is so oversimplified that it's, and to try to capture everything that goes into the water issue would take another day and a half just sitting in here and talking about it. But it is on the table. We are making strides with Northern, with the Bureau of Reclamation. We go back to Washington. This is not something that you can just do overnight. I'm sure everybody thinks that we've been taking too long to do it, but to put these people in the room that have never been in the room together and come up with a fix, it's like saying world peace. Everybody wants world peace. Go try to do it. Everybody wants to save the Fraser. Go try to do it under Colorado Water Law and see how hard that becomes. The second thing is the landfill. We'll talk about that, I'm sure we'll talk about that later, so I'll pass on that. The third thing is, we're going to have another drop in assessed valuation, we believe. I'm looking at the assessor over there. He's got, he's got a poker face. He'll never say it, but we've got to look, we've got to look out into the future and start seeing where we're going to have less money to work with, and we've got a plan for that.
Thank you. Now, onto Merritt Linky. You will have a minute and a half to respond. What are your top three agenda items if elected?
The first, first thing that I would do if elected is to try to learn as much as I possibly could about, about everything. And obviously, as an elected official, you can't be an expert on everything, but if you can learn and figure out who are the experts around, and you can surround yourself with the best people possible, then you have a lot better chance of being successful in whatever, whatever it is that you do. So, one of the first things I would try to do is to meet with all the department heads within the county and find out what's working within, in their department, what could be better, what could be, what could we do to improve it, what could we do to make it more Also, in part of that learning process, I think I need to meet with some of the business leaders in the community. There's people out there that are movers and shakers. What's working for them? What's, what could we do as government to get out of their way so they could be more successful in that regard, too? Then, when I, when I've taken all that information, all that, that knowledge that I've gained, I would evaluate and make some decisions on what's working, what's not working, and try to come up with some policies that facilitate what it is that's best for Grand County to move ourselves into the future. I think Grand County is right now, we talked a minute ago about boom and bust cycles. I think right now, we are in a transition kind of a period. We're not really, we're not booming for sure, but I don't know that we're totally busting either. I think we're, we're trying to redefine ourselves. What direction are we going to go from here? And what is, what are we going to look like in five years and 10 years? And I think I'd be, one of the biggest things I'd want to accomplish in the first few months is to evaluate what I know and try to make policies going forward that would define that vision for the future.
Thank you very much. Finally, Rob Rankin. You will have a minute and a half to respond. What are your top three agenda items if elected?
Thank you. Number one's always budget. My background lets me know that a budget reflects the program that an organization goes forward with. The Grand County budget is in good shape, and there are unknowns out there, some significant unknowns in terms of budgetary expenditures. But I also know that our county employees haven't had raises for the past four years. There are money, there is money in reserve, there are reserves, which I want to take a look at very carefully to say, okay, what's more important here? Are we talking about people? Are we talking about things? And I believe that people are the most important part of any organization, and we need to be able to recognize the people that get up in the middle of the night to plow the road so you can get to school, even if you're driving your own car. Our police officers, the sheriff's officers, our EMT people, make sure that we've got a consistent workforce up here that can also afford to live here. Second one is the water issue. I'm in favor of the negotiated agreements. Nancy Stewart was the swing vote in approving the Moffett Farming Project. That's a significant difference between Merritt and myself. I would, I supported, would have supported that agreement, and dealing again from a position of strength and knowledge. And the third one, with the issues of landfill, with the issues of water, with the issues of budget, we can't lose sight of the fact that the county still provides incredible services for human services, public health, early childhood, the support of our history and local legacy, and that can't be lost in the shuffle.
Okay, Mr. Rankin, you will respond first to the next question. The county appears to have very large budget reserves at the moment. What large capital improvement project would be first on your list to make life better for Grand County residents? You have a minute and a half to respond.
The county has been saving up in terms of reserves. Probably the first one that we have to address is the landfill. And it's not because we want to, it's because we have to. When we closed the Granby landfill, we ended up realizing that it's kind of built on a big gooey slimy piece of green clay that wants to slide down into the Colorado River. That has to be stabilized. There has to be money set aside for that. But we also have $900,000 sitting in the reserves, set aside for the Fraser Valley Parkway. That needs to be looked at very carefully to see if that's a reasonable amount of money to be set aside for that expenditure at this point in time. But I would say that the major one that has to be looked at as far as capital expenditure is making sure that the landfill is closed safely and effectively to, make sure that it is safe for us and for the generations to follow.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Linky, you will be next. You have a minute and a half to respond. The county appears to have very large budget reserves at the moment. What large capital improvement project would be first on your list to make life better for Grand County residents?
Thank you. That's certainly a question that's been on the forefront of most people's minds, and I'm going to choose to answer that a little bit differently. What capital project is going to make life better for everyone? And I'm going to say that there's no capital project that's going to make life better for everyone. Just because the money is there doesn't mean we should spend it. My dad used to tell me, don't let that money burn a hole in your pocket. So I think that's, that's the kind of approach that we need to take. And I think these guys mentioned a little bit ago that the landfill could be a huge expense coming up here that we need to do something about, and it's probably going to be a huge financial burden coming up at some point in the future. And I think we need to at least have some money set aside for that. So that could be a capital project that is not necessarily by our choosing, but it's still nonetheless a big expenditure of money. And I think we need to ask ourselves the question is, is where is that money coming from and whose money is that? That's the taxpayers' money. And I'm not saying we should give it back to the taxpayers right now, but we do need to plan for the future, and I think Commissioner Newberry indicated that our assessed values are going to go down, and I think I would probably concur with that, that that's probably going to happen here. So we may not have the revenue stream coming in that we're having now. It's kind of a two-year lag in the way that assessed values work. We're just, really kind of just now hitting the recession era monetary funds that really started happening in '08 and '09. This is what's happening to the county right now. So my answer to your question is that I don't have a capital project in mind that we would want to spend that money on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Newberry, you will have a minute and a half to respond. The county appears to have very large budget reserves at the moment. What large capital improvement project would be first on your list to make life better for Grand County residents?
I guess my first response is, if you don't notice Grand County government, that's a good thing for the people of Grand County. If we can, if we can continue to operate and provide the services we're providing, and deal with the landfill, and deal with the slide that we have there, deal with the water issues that we have, continue to buy capital improvements, like a motor grater, motor grater's $250,000. We just got a software system for the assessor and the treasurer to work together. What was that? I'm going to keep picking on you, Tom. That was, what was that, $400,000? $400,000 just for that? So it's not, this is not an easy organization to run, but thank you very much for everybody talking about the 25 million that I feel personally responsible for setting up, and I've been very, very conservative, and I believe in that. And that's put us in a great spot that we can react. But this landfill could go anywhere from $12 million to $50 million if we have to dig the whole thing up, and that is a possibility. We have spent some money out there, I've been criticized for that. What would you do different? Hindsight's always easy. We put a berm up on the, on the top end of it to stop it from sliding. It worked. We have not had any more sliding. The bottom side of it started to slide, and now we're trying to come up with a remedy for that. It's, it's an unknown, but we have tried to do our best to position ourselves that you won't feel it, that you won't feel what happens when we have to come up with those large amounts of money, and we can continue to plow your roads and provide the services that we should provide to our people.
Thank you. Okay, Chaz McConnell, you will have a minute and a half to respond. The county appears to have very large budget reserves at the moment. What large capital improvement project would be first on your list to make life better for Grand County residents?
I think I'd have to agree with Merritt here. Just, just because you have this money in reserves, doesn't mean that you need to spend it. This is going to be the first year in the Grand County budget where it's going to be at a zero-based budget, meaning the amount of money that comes in is going to be about the amount of money that's going to be spent to, for the services of Grand County. That 25 million that we're talking about, those dollars came from what I call the glory years, from 2000, 2007, when the building was, was going crazy. A lot of fees were being collected, a lot of taxes were being paid. So with the assessed value in the odd year, the 2013, where it's going to be down between